Good evening. This fifty-eighth meeting of the seventy-third term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As a reminder to members of the press as well as public, please ensure that all your electronic devices are turned off or at a minimum they are on silence to ensure that we do not disrupt tonight's proceedings. Our invocation this evening will be delivered by Mr. Reverend Darryl Gold, Senior of Gillis Memorial Christian Community Church. It is our pleasure and honor to welcome you here tonight.
Thank you.
Floor is yours.
To City Council President Nick Mosby and to all City Council members, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Also, I am grateful for the invitation from Council Vice President Sharon Middleton and for all she does for the sixth district. Let us bow heads and pray. Most gracious and all wise Father, it is once again we come before your presence to say thank you. God, we thank you for your goodness, your mercy, and your loving kindness. Thank you for looking beyond our faults and still meeting our needs. God, we invite you into this session and say have your way. We pray that your presence will fill the room and you will give us direction and guidance. Season our words towards one another as you extend your grace and mercy. Amen.
Amen. At this time, we're going to state the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Please be seated. For our showcase this evening, it is my pleasure to welcome Ms. Melissa Missy Martin, founder of Stanley Snacks for School Kids. Stanley Snacks offers healthier snacks in the Baltimore metropolitan area for public school kids who suffer from food insecurity and hunger. At this time, I yield the floor to you, Ms. Martin.
Thank you, President. Hi, my name is Missy Martin, and I am the founder and executive director of Stanley Snacks for School Kids. Some of you may know me as you've seen me dropping off snacks at some of our city schools on the west side and the east side. We currently serve sixteen schools, and the total population of these schools is right now seven thousand children. They come pick up snacks every two weeks. We give Nutri-Green bars, fruit snacks, Fig bars, a healthy piece of fruit, things like that. And this all started seven years ago when I had a teacher tell me that her student was in trouble because he sat in the bathroom during lunchtime. He owed the school six dollars and forty cents, and they refused to give him his lunch. So I contacted the school and said, what can I do? And they said, due to the privacy of children, you can't do anything. So I got online and I sent snacks. And the teacher at the time could not have snacks in her classroom, and so she gave them to the school nurse. And the school nurse said, you're going to need to thank Stanley for these snacks. And that was seven years ago. And my goal was to have three or four schools and just be this happy person who delivered snacks. And then, as the word got out, our mission grew and grew and grew. We service Harlem Park Elementary, we service Furman Templeton Elementary, Renaissance Reach Partnership over on the east side, we have some county schools as well. But the word gets out. And because I have this huge heart, I never say no. So if a school needs something, they absolutely can reach out to me and we make it happen. The other day, I was visiting a school, and they said to me, thank God for your little snacks. And I said, why? And they said, we have a second grader who brought her little brother to school with her. He's two and a half years old, and the mother couldn't be located, and the little girl didn't know what to do with her brother. So she brought him to school. And the little boy started crying because he didn't know anybody, he was afraid. And the principal happened to have some fruit snacks in her office that we had donated. And she said, all of a sudden, the little boy was extremely happy. And you know, she said, and then the mother came, and she was like, oh, my gosh, he's so calm with you. And she was like, well, they're Stanley snacks, that's why they're calm. So that's one of the things we do. We make sure high school kids have what they need, because if you're familiar with some of the menus in the city schools, especially in high school, they might only have a peanut butter and jelly sandwich at lunch. And they might go the whole night and into the next day before they get anything else. So we will often to our high schools take peanut butter crackers and mac and cheese cups and soup cups, because we want to make sure at night that those tummies aren't hungry. We want the kids not to have a hungry tummy during class, because we don't want them to misbehave. And we all know that we came up with the word hangry. So imagine being a little tyke, and your tummy's growling, and you have a teacher standing up in the middle in front of everybody saying, you gotta listen to what I say. And your tummy's growling. I mean, I'm sure right now there's some of us whose stomachs are growling. So that's what Stanley Snacks does. I say this all the time, but we provide hope, one snack at a time. So I am thankful for all of you for listening. Thank you, Councilman Costello, for being a cheerleader. I am in his community, and so I am appreciative for all of you, and I hope to continue our mission for many, many years. Thank you, President.
Well, thank you so much, Ms. Martin. Before you sit down, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Hey, Mr. President, I'd like, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to suspend the rules for floor. I'm having a really hard time.
She already has floor privileges.
She already has floor privileges. Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution here from the City Council.
Come up here. You come up here. Ms. Martin, you could come here.
Yes, sir.
Got a resolution here from the City Council of Baltimore. Be hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Melissa, or Missy as we know her, Martin, in recognition of your enthusiastic and enduring commitment to filling the hunger needs of Baltimore city children. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution to be presented on this twelfth day of June, 2023, signed by Council President Mosby and all members.
Thank you, Ms. Martin, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, we're going to have some special recognitions, and I'm going to extend a floor privileges to the men and women of blue and white. Before we do so, some housekeeping. There were two phones that were left in the room across, so everyone, please make sure you have your phone. If not, Derek Green in the back, with his hand raised, he has the two phones. So please look to make sure you have your phone. First up, we're going to call the leadership of Alpha Zeta Chapter of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. If you guys could come up. Madam President, you're going to step up with me. And maybe one other person come on this side. Cole, you want to come over here? If you guys were unaware, my sister is a member of this amazing sorority as well, so this is special to me. But it reads, City Council Baltimore Presidential Citation, I, Nick Mosby, President of Baltimore City Council, do hereby present the President's Citation to Alpha Zeta Chapter of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated in recognition of the Alpha Zeta Chapter of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, as it celebrates its centennial anniversary in 2023. Give it up. As the first Zeta Phi Beta Graduate Chapter in the state of Maryland, Alpha Zeta has a rich and storied history of service to the city of Baltimore. In witness whereof, the city of Baltimore extends its sincerest congratulations, and I've affixed my signature to this citation on this occasion, given under the corporate seal of the city of Baltimore this twelfth day of June of 2023. Congratulations. Thank you. I'll come down this way, they'll, oh, he'll help you down too. God, I'm brother green. Next up, Tau Eta Zeta Chapter, the leaders of that chapter could come forward, please. Madam President?
Don't look at me now.
Now, there's one person, you could come on this side to balance out the picture. Is that okay?
Sorry.
Oh, one more, one more person would like to join us. The incoming president, okay, Madam President. You got the blue glasses too, huh? You got everything. I like it. Looks good. All right. To Tau Eta Zeta Chapter of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, in recognition of Tau Eta Zeta Chapter of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, for its twenty years of service to Baltimore, the Office of Baltimore City Council President Nick J. Mosby extends heartfelt appreciation as you hold the 2023 Blue and White Night here at City Hall. In witness whereof, I've put my signature on this corporate seal, the city of Baltimore, twelfth day of June of the year of 2023. Congratulations, and thank you so much for your service. Thank you so much. And my mother raised me well, so she always said, women first. So next up, we got the brothers of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated. As the leadership comes up, I would like to also recognize State Delegate N. Scott Phillips, strong member on the Judiciary Committee down in Annapolis for us. So you can come up as well as I give this citation. Now, Sigmas, you say bossless too, right? You don't, when you say president, I got that wrong, see? I know where I'm going. And this reads, Zeta Sigma Chapter of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated, in recognition, they also happen to be one of the largest chapters in the, in the world. Is that true? Is it fair for me to say? All right, I want you guys to correct me. But it reads, in recognition of Zeta Sigma Chapter of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated, which has been serving the city of Baltimore for one hundred and one years, focusing on Phi Beta Sigma principles of brothers, scholarship, and service. Again, in witness whereof, the city of Baltimore extends its sincerest congratulations, and I've affixed my signature on this citation on this occasion, given under the corporate seal of the city of Baltimore this twelfth day of June, 2023. Give it up, come on. There we go. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now proceed to adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the journal for the May fifteen, 2023, special meeting proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is now adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on, at the beginning of page two of your agenda for tonight. Will now go to executive nominations. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in the first nomination.
EA two-three dash zero-one-nine-eight Corinne Johnson, Director, Baltimore City Department of Transportation, District Eight.
Nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk, floor is yours.
EA two-three dash zero-one-nine-nine Claudia Freeland Jolyn, Member, Planning Commission, District Fourteen.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk, floor is yours.
EA two-three dash zero-two-zero-zero Max Grossfield, Member, Baltimore City Wage Commission, District Twelve.
This nomination is assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA two-three dash zero-two-zero-one Chloe Starcher, Member, Baltimore City Wage Commission, District Fourteen.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA two-three dash zero-two-zero-two R. Anthony Mills, Office Administrator, Office of Water Customer Advocacy and Appeals, District Six.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA two-three dash zero-two-zero-three Feviola Donato Galindo, Member, Baltimore Hispanic Commission, District Four.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA two-three dash zero-two-zero-four David A. Rosario, Member, Baltimore Hispanic Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk.
EA two-three dash zero-two-zero-five Elizabeth A. Hafee, Member, Baltimore Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, District One.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Madam Clerk, the last nomination.
EA two-three dash zero-two-zero-six Michelle A. Goins, Member, Adult Public Guardianship Review Board.
This nomination has been assigned to rules and oversight. Will now turn to bills to be introduced for first reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the first bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-three-nine-one City Streets Closing a Portion of Boston Street for the Purpose of Condemning and Closing a Portion of Boston Street Bounded by the East Side of Haven Street, the Southernmost Property Line of one-two-zero-one South Haven LLC, the West Side of Canton Railroad Right-Away, and the North Side of Boston Street, as shown on a plaque number three-zero-seven A-22A dated March seventeen, 2022, and filed under the Department of Transportation and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors: City Council President Administration.
This bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-three-nine-two Sale of Property, a Portion of Boston Street for the Purpose of Authorizing the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore to Sell at Either Public or Private Sale All Its Interest in Certain Property That is Known as the Former Bed of a Portion of Boston Street Bounded by the East Side of Haven Street, the Southernmost Property Line of one-two-zero-one South Haven LLC, the West Side of Canton Railroad Right-Away, and the North Side of Boston Street, and No Longer Needed for Public Use, and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsors: City Council President Administration.
This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, next.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-three-nine-three Street Encroachment, three-four-two-four Toon Street, for the Purpose of Permitting Subject to Certain Conditions the Construction and Maintenance of a Portion of a Building Projecting into Public Right-Away on the West of Bayless Street on the Property Known as three-four-two-four Toon Street, and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsors: City Council President Administration, Cohen co-sponsor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-three-nine-four Street Encroachment, two-two-nine East Montgomery Street, for the Purpose of Permitting Subject to Certain Conditions the Construction and Maintenance of a Portion of a Building Projecting into the Public Right-Away of the East Side of Property Known as two-two-nine East Montgomery Street, and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsors: City Council President Administration.
This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-three-nine-five Air Rights Closing a Portion of Newkirk Street for the Purpose of Condemning and Closing the Air Rights Area Extending Over a Portion of the Public Right-Away of Newkirk Street, as shown on a plaque number three-three-seven dash A-29A dated February twenty-fifth, 2022, and filed under the Department of Transportation and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsors: City Council President Administration.
This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-three-nine-six City Streets Closing a Twenty-Foot Alley and Two Ten-Foot Alleys for the Purpose of Condemning and Closing a Twenty-Foot Alley and Two Ten-Foot Alleys Bounded by Park Heights Avenue, Woodland Avenue, Demore Avenue, and West Garrison Avenue, as shown on a plaque number three-one-seven dash A-28A dated March sixth, 2023, and filed under the Department of Transportation and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsors: City Council President Administration.
This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-three-nine-seven Rezoning Western Side, North Lehigh Street, Southwest Corner Eager Street, and Western Side, North Lehigh Street, fifty-two-seven feet south of Eager Street. For the Purpose of Changing the Zoning for the Properties Known as Western Side, North Lehigh Street, West Corner Eager Street, Block six-one-eight-two, Lot zero-zero-seven, and Western Side, North Lehigh Street, five-two dash seven feet south of Eager Street, Block six-one-eight-two, Lot zero-zero-eight, as outlined and read on the accompanying plaque from the R-four zoning district to the I-two zoning district, and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsor Glover.
This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-three-nine-eight Study and Report, 2023 Baltimore City Food Climate, for the Purpose of the Director of the Department of Planning and the Commissioner of the Health Department to Consult with Baltimore Development Corporation and the John Hopkins Center for a Livable Future and to Submit a Report Detailing the Current State of Food Insecurity in Baltimore City and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsor Torrance.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I would like to yield the floor to the sponsor of the bill. Councilman Torrance, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I rise as I submit this bill in urgency, as we do know that we do have food insecurity in the city of Baltimore. However, I want to make sure that our agencies have a timely process and a deadline that is outlined in law where they will get us a report. We know from when we exited the pandemic that Baltimore City went from one-fourth of its residents on SNAP benefits to one-third. And as we know, inflation has hit us hard. We need to make sure that our incentives at BDC are working to attract grocery stores. An update on where the offer dollars are being used in terms of how do we get there? I love the partnerships that we're building with offer dollars, but I want to know when the deadline is to get it up, running, and done. In addition to that, I want to make sure that we are outlining what our actual environment looks like and being truthful about how we are right now. We, our last report was in 2020. I think it's high time that we have another one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance. This bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations. Madam Clerk, please read the next bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-three-nine-nine Plan Unit Development Amendment Benhurst Park for the Purpose of Repealing Ordinance Zero-nine dash one-six-one Approving Certain Amendments to the Development Plan of the Benhurst Park Plan Unit Development and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsor Schleifer.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-zero-zero Port Covington Community Benefits District Amendment Boundaries for the Purpose of Amending the Boundaries of the Port Covington Community Benefits District. Sponsors: Costello.
This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-zero-one Rezoning Three-four-three-three Old Frederick Road for the Purpose of Changing the Zoning for the Property Known as Three-four-three-three Old Frederick Road, Block two-two-four-four-A, Lot zero-two-three, as outlined and read on the accompanying plaque from the R-five zoning district to the C-two zoning district, and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsor Burnett.
This bill has been assigned to ECD. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-zero-two Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals Consent Agenda Establishment for the Purpose of Requiring that the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals Establish a Consent Agenda at Certain Public Hearings, Establishing Certain Standards for the Consent Agenda, and Defining a Certain Related Term. Sponsor Schleifer.
At this time, I see the hand raised before we go to you real quick, sponsor of Chairman Costello. Any additional sponsors? The floor is yours. Chairman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm introducing this rule, this bill to clarify the different rules that have, some have been followed, some haven't been followed. There seems to be a debate amongst the Law Department, the administration, and many lawyers about the legal opinion on how the BMZA is supposed to operate under different agenda items. I have constituents that have reached out to me for a variety of reasons. I have a constituent, unfortunately, who's suffering from ALS. I have a constituent who, unfortunately, their, their parent is no longer able to live alone, and they'd like to be able to have their parent move in with them. And then you have constituents who have reached out for things such as just simply adding an addition onto their home. And when I see, when I see people getting variances to add on to make their kitchen a little bigger, but then I have people who have medical issues and other concerns like that being, being denied without any explanation, without any conversation about that before major changes have been made, it's, it's quite concerning that, that one person's legal opinion is, is, is taking over what the, what the entire city's future looks like. And so we know that we need private investment in order for the city to grow. We know that people take great pride in their property, and unfortunately, many legal opinions are out there that, that say that the board is not following the law, the board. And so what I'm looking to do here is clarify, so to bring everybody on the same page, to have some hearings, to have conversations about that, so that we can figure out a path forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership, Chairman Schleifer. That bill is assigned to rules and legislative oversight. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-four-zero-three Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three Dwelling Units in the R-eight zoning district, variances one-three-two-three North Carolin Street, for the Purpose of Permitting Subject to Certain Conditions the Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three Dwelling Units in the R-eight zoning district on the Property Known as one-three-two-three North Carolin Street, Block one-one-five-zero, Lot zero-four-three, as outlined and read on the accompanying plaque, granting variances from certain bulk regulations, lot area size, and all street parking requirements, and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsor Stokes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This bill will be assigned to ECD that closes out our bills on first reader. We're going to go into resolutions to be introduced tonight. There's only one. Madam Clerk, please read it in.
City Council Resolution two-three dash zero-one-seven-six-R Informational Hearing Implementation of the Kerwin Blueprint for the Purpose of Inviting Representatives from the Baltimore City Public School System and the Board of School Commissioners to Discuss How the Elements of the Kerwin Blueprint Implementation Plan Are Being Incorporated into the Seven Strategic Priorities of the Board of School Commissioners. Sponsor Torrance.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I would like to call on the sponsor of the bill, Councilmember Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the council. This is just a continuation of the conversation that we have with city schools at budget hearings. In April, city schools submitted its plan to the state about their Kerwin implementation plan. In addition to all seven areas, I would like to make sure that the council is aware of how they're going to expend not only the Kerwin funds, but the way we close the achievement gap with this newfound funding, as well as our new investment in city schools. With that being said, I yield back to the chair.
Thank you so much, Chairman Tor, I mean, Councilmember Torrance. Any co-sponsors? I see one, Councilman Cohen, Madam Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, Councilmember Burnett, Councilwoman Bullock, Councilwoman Porter, Councilwoman Ramos, Chairman Conway, Chairman Costello. Thank you. This resolution has been assigned to education, workforce, and youth. Next up, we're going to go to our consent calendar. You can find it in section eight at the back of the agenda. At this time, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the consent calendar is approved. We will now move to bills on second reader. Before we do, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I move, we read short titles on second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we will be in short titles for duration of the meeting. Hearing and seeing none, we are in short titles for the duration of the meeting. First up, we're going to go to Public Safety and Government Operations. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the bill.
City Council Bill two-three dash zero-three-seven-eight Unlawful Practices Discrimination Based on Characteristics or Status.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Conway. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Government Operations held a hearing for this bill, and this bill came out of committee favorable with amendments on June seventh, 2023. The committee amendments are on my colleagues' desks, and I move the amendments.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor of adopting amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendments are adopted. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorable as amended.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. The body would like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to invoke City Council Rule twelve dash one for same-day advancement from second and third reader.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, it will be moved forward for same-day advancement. Actually, since it's been properly moved in second, we have the votes, I'm sorry. In order for us to do it, we have to do a roll call. So it's been properly moved in second, and now we're going to vote so individually. So Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
Aye.
Dorsey.
Aye.
Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
The ayes have it. The bill moves forward for third reader today. Next, we're going to go to Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, please call the first bill.
City Council Bill two-two-dash-zero-two-seven-zero, Sale of Property, five-five-four-five Kennison Avenue.
The body would like to provide an opportunity for Chair of the Committee to speak. Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This bill moves forward. It will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bills.
One second. Yeah. I'm sorry. So that bill moves forward, will be printed for third reading. Now we're going to go to City Council Bill twenty-three-dash-three-four-five.
City Council Bill two-three-dash-zero-three-four-five, Salary City Solicitor.
At this time, the body would like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held the hearing. I move the bill favorably.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. I would like to recognize Chair of the Committee again, Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to, I move for invocation of City Council Rule twelve-dash-one for same-day advancement from second to third reader for Council Bill twenty-three-dash-zero-three-four-five.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second. At this time, we need to go on the roll call. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
The ayes have it. This bill will move forward for same-day third reading. Next up, we are going to bills on third reading for same day. So we're going to do the first two bills that we did. The first one is Bill twenty-three-dash-zero-three-seven-eight. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the bill and read the roll.
City Council Bill two-three-dash-zero-three-seven-eight, Unlawful Practices, Discrimination Based on Characteristics or Status. President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. Yeah, you would like to explain your vote?
Just wanted to note, point of order for Bill twenty-two-dash-zero-two-seven-zero, we didn't vote. We did second, but we didn't vote on it.
What?
Seven-two-zero, sale of property?
We didn't vote.
We did vote.
We did a motion in a second. We didn't vote.
Well, just for the chair's indulgence, we'll just take a quick vote and make sure everybody squared away. It's fourteen-to-one saying we voted, Mr. Chair, but we're going to just take it up just in case. We'll, we'll go back and look at the tape. Madam Clerk, to Chairman Conway's point, if we could just read in City Council Bill twenty-two-dash-two-seven-zero, sale of property.
City Council Bill two-two-dash-zero-two-seven-zero, Sale of Property, five-five-four-five Kennison Avenue. President Mosby.
No, this is, this is just for second read advancement. So I just need a motion. Hold on. Chair of the Committee?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hopefully, I remember this on second reader next time we're doing PSGO. I move the bill favorably.
Now, you've got a second this one. It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The bill will advance. Thank you for, for pointing that out. If you were right, Mr. Chair, we'll see in the tape. And then we're going to go back to you, Chairman Costello. Did we call on second-day advancement for?
Yes.
The city solicitor? And did we take the vote, Madam Clerk?
Yep, it was on third.
So we're good? Got you. All right. So now we're going to, now, Madam Clerk, if you could please call in twenty-three-dash-three-four-five and do a roll call.
I don't know where you are.
Oh, this one right here. It's not going to be on yours.
Okay. This one. City Council Bill two-three-dash-zero-three-seven-eight. Seven-eight, Unlawful Practices, Discrimination Based on Characteristics or Status. President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen. It wasn't.
Oh, you called the wrong amount, sorry. Yeah, yeah. We did this double. Thank you, thank you for finding it. Yeah, good. Guys, listen up. So this is, remember, we had two same days. This is the second one for the solicitor salary. Madam Clerk, please call it in.
City Council Bill two-three-dash-zero-three-four-five, Salary City Solicitor. President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
Thank you. That bill, this bill is approved. We will now turn to bills on third reader. Madam Clerk, first bill.
City Council Bill two-one-dash-zero-one-six-zero, Building Code Cool Russ. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
Please note, that's a fourteen-to-one vote. Chairman Schleifer is a no. Congratulations, Chairman Conway, on that. This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-one-dash-zero-one-seven-eight, Tax Credits, Historic Properties, Definition of Historic Property. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
Congratulations, Councilmember Bullock. This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-two-dash-zero-two-five-five, Arson Offender Registration. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-two-dash-zero-three-two-five, Zoning, Conditional Use, Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R-seven zoning district, Variance is four-six-six Hornell Street. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two-three-dash-zero-three-five-nine, Rezoning six-hundred North Packer Street. President Mosby. Cohen. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Burnett. Bullock. Porter. Costello. Stokes. Glover. Ramos.
This bill is approved, and that closes out third reading. Before we go into the next section, clearing of the bills, I would ask at this time if members from the amazing SEIU eleven-ninety-nine please stand to be recognized by the City Council. Your hard work and advocacy for healthcare workers particularly is unmatched. Obviously, many members of this council support you greatly, and anytime you're able to come to City Hall, we absolutely appreciate your presence, particularly with Madam Ricard Jones. So thank you so much. And then also, I think there's members of Grove Park. If you guys could please stand as well just to allow the body to recognize you. Obviously, I believe that your interests are the same as eleven-ninety-nine. That's my assumption. But we thank you for your hard work and your continued advocacy. The council looks to continue to work with you. So thank you for coming out. You know, I constantly tell folks that, you know, we work in this building, but it's actually your building. This is the building for the citizens of Baltimore, the taxpayers, and when you're coming out and participation, participating in civic engagement, we truly, truly appreciate it. So thank you so much. Please give it up for the members of Grove Park. The next section is clearing of the bill status. It can be found on Page eight of the agenda. Please note that the final clearing will be on June twenty-six at five P.M. If you would like any of the bills removed from the list, please ensure that you reach out to the Executive Secretary, Natwana Austin, as soon as possible. Next up, we're going to turn to community announcements. Chair, when you hear your committee recognized, please stand and announce any announcements. ECD is first up. Madam VP, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Economic and Community Development Committee would like to announce the following hearings. On June twentieth, twenty-twenty-three, at two-fifteen P.M., we will hear Bill number twenty-three-dash-oh-three-eight-nine, Transit-Oriented Development, Rice's Town Plaza, sponsor Administration. And also, on June twentieth, twenty-twenty-three, at two-twenty P.M., we were, we will hear City Council Bill twenty-three-dash-oh-three-nine-zero, and that's another Transit-Oriented Development, Penn Station, sponsor Administration.
And to the Administration, please note that there should be two other bills that we would like to do at the same time. So if you could please work with Department of Transportation for that time-sensitive topic. Next up, Education, Workforce, and Youth. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, Health, Environment, Technology. Thank you, Madam Chair. Next up, Public Safety, Government Operations.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will meet on Wednesday, June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three to hear LO twenty-two-dash-zero-zero-three-zero, Legislative Oversight, Crime Reduction and Prevention. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will hear on Wednesday, October fourth, twenty-twenty-three. Excuse me, that was at one P.M. LO twenty-three-dash-zero-zero-three-eight on October fourth, twenty-twenty-three at one P.M. Legislative Oversight, Supporting Returning Citizens. And the committee will hear on Wednesday, June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three at one P.M. Bill twenty-three-dash-zero-three-eight-five, Studying Report, Baltimore City Climate Resilience Authority, sponsored by myself. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, we're going to go to Rules and Legislative Oversight.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, June twentieth, at ten A.M. for EA twenty-three-dash-zero-one-nine-zero, Victor Clark, member of the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals. We'll also hold a hearing on Tuesday, June twentieth, at ten A.M. for EA twenty-three-dash-zero-one-nine-one, Tracy Barber Gilbert, member of the Fair Election Fund Commission. In, at the same time, we'll hold a hearing for EA twenty-three-dash-zero-one-nine-two, Douglas McCouch, member of the Planning Commission, and EA twenty-three-dash-zero-one-nine-three, Noel Newman, member of the Board of Ethics, EA twenty-three-dash-zero-one-nine-four, David Rosario, member of the Baltimore Hispanic Commission. And I'd like to move to suspend Rules ten-two and ten-three to announce a hearing on a bill introduced at this meeting.
Without objection, Rules ten-two and ten-three will be suspended. Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, June twenty-ninth, at five P.M. For the Ordinance of Board of Municipal Zoning Appeals Consent Agenda Establishment. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, last but certainly not least, Ways and Means. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Monday, July tenth, at five P.M. City Council Resolution twenty-two-dash-zero-one-two-six-R, Informational Hearing, East Baltimore Development Incorporated Audit. And the committee will be reconvening on this Wednesday at ten A.M. Regarding all three budget bills, twenty-three-dash-zero-three-eight-one, twenty-three-dash-zero-three-eight-two, twenty-three-dash-zero-three-eight-three. Not saying, spelling all of them out because the committee is in recess, so this notification wasn't necessary.
Understood, but just, just repeat it so everyone knows.
Sure. Twenty-three-dash-zero-three-eight-one, twenty-three-dash-zero-three-eight-two, twenty-three-dash-zero-three-eight-three. And I believe that would be the ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty-twenty-four. The budget for the Baltimore City, for the Board of the Baltimore City Public School System for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty-twenty-four, and the constant yield tax rate for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. I've said it a few times.
You were close. You got an A. Not perfect, but. Thank you, Mr. Chair. To that note, I would like to thank all of the council members, all fourteen of you. I think that this council held really respectful substantive and timely budget hearings. I think that the administration was appreciative of our level of professionalism. I think there was a lot of hard questions asked, a lot of important answers provided back. But I think the decorum of this body was held, and I appreciate the level of preparedness that each and every one of you brought every single day. Some of the days we were here till twelve-thirty at night, starting at nine A.M. that morning. Obviously, the sandwiches and box lunches and food that we provided, you probably was not enough for your palates. But to that point, I would like to thank all of the staff that helped participate, particularly Hosea, for ensuring that the room was set up properly. I'd like to thank our folks over at Council Services for being here diligently with us the entire time. I would like to thank folks on the Council President's office, as well as the Mayor's office. Like I said, I think it was really substantive hearings. Truly, truly appreciate the level of professionalism that everyone carried throughout those hearings. With that, we're going to go into regular announcements. At this time, are there any regular announcements for members of the body? First, we're going to go to Councilmember Torrance. The floor is yours. Councilman. No, it will, you have to stand up first. It's, you just press it. So this is a new audio system to everybody, so you can press it. If you see that it's green, that means you've activated your mic, but it's not fully activated. You're unable to talk. So at this time, the body would like to recognize Councilwoman Ramos. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. This week, we are losing my Chief of Staff and Legislative Director, Gabriel Stewart Sackowitz. He has been a member of staff here at City Council for over seven years, first working with Councilwoman Snead, who I invited this evening and couldn't make it, and also for my office. And so we are going to miss him, but he is going to be working with the Department of Finance. So he is not going far away. And so we just wanted to congratulate him on his accomplishment and thank him for all the work in city government. And so I have a resolution to read and then asking for floor privileges as well.
Already granted.
Okay.
Come on up and get your flowers.
Great. I need my glasses, sorry. City Council of Baltimore Resolution, be it hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Gabriel Stewart Sackowitz. Sorry, Sackowitz. I was right the first time. In recognition of your hard work and dedication to the residents of the thirteenth and the fourteenth Councilmatic District and to the city of Baltimore, the entire membership extends its best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution to be presented on the twelfth day of June, twenty-twenty-three, signed by President Mosby, myself, and all of City Council members.
Are there any additional announcements? Councilman Torrance, right?
I'm on. Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. President. As we approach Juneteenth, I just want to remind the general public, Afram is back at Druid Hill Park starting Saturday, June seventeenth through eighteenth. Please come out. We're expecting over two-hundred thousand people. It is a proud gem of the Seventh District. Please take care of my park. Don't leave trash in it. In addition to that, I am working with Councilman Burnett. On Friday, we are offering an opportunity for a youth symposium with STEM and art at Kaia Hill Recreation Center in the Seventh District. This is an opportunity for our young people from Baltimore City Schools to show off their artwork, but also show us their skills with science and STEM. So look forward to having any council members come out and support.
Any additional announcements? Oh, yeah, he said. Hearing and seeing none. At this time, I would like to recognize our amazing Vice President, Sharon Green Middleton.
And before we close out, I would be remiss if I did not thank Zeta Phi Beta Sorority for the wonderful work that, in partnership that they have with the Zeta Center for learning for older adults. They were the first partnership of the city when I first became a council member, and they have really continued that partnership and is still the most active center for older adults. So we can't thank you enough for that partnership and the work that you do specifically in the center of Park Heights, and congratulations on your one-of-many days in the People's Building of City Hall. And thank you for staying for the entire meeting and the entire meeting and also the brothers of Phi Beta Sigma that also work with them at that center from time to time as well. On that note, the next meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, June 26, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. And may we have a moment of silence for the now 125 victims of homicide this year.
Thank you. There being no new business before the death of the City Council, this concludes the 58th meeting of the 73rd term of your Baltimore City Council. Baltimore, we love you.